Are you ready? Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the council meeting of October 28th.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in quorum, Councilmember Garza is absent.
With that, we will move into a moment of meditation and pledge. Does anyone on the dais have someone that they'd like remembered at this time? Yes, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to remember Congressman John Conyers.
Who recently passed.
At the age of ninety, longest-serving African-American in Congress, notwithstanding some of the scandal that caused him to resign. He was a great man. And did great things and, you know, the world will be a little less righteous without him. So, if you think about him, I appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Hussein.
I'd ask that we remember Samuel Horton, Samuel Horton's family. Samuel Horton is an incredible Southwest Lansing advocate. He's a longtime Churchill Downs resident. He's a member of the Southwest Action Group and really just an all-around good guy. He recently lost his life partner, his wife. So again, I'd ask that we remember him.
Thank you. All right, with that, if we could please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have for your approval the council proceedings of October 14th?
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of council proceedings from October 14th, 2019.
We have a motion, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passage unanimously.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmember comments, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I just quickly want to remind or tell folks that we will not be having a first ward constituent meeting this month. It would have been this Saturday, but I have a personal matter I need to tend to. So I am canceling it and I will send out the email, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Spitzley.
Just, sorry, just a few announcements. First is the Southwest Action Group's first annual trunk-or-treat event. That will be on Halloween, so October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This will be at the site of the forthcoming town square. And so that is Pleasant Grove Plaza, adjacent to the Pleasant Grove and Homes District. There will also be a classic car show, so people that are mobile, please consider making that part of your stops. The second piece is that my next constituent contact meeting will be held November 9th from eight to, I'm sorry, from 10 to 12 noon at 5825 Wise Road. That's the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. We are fortunate enough to have Chief Darryl Green with us, November 9th. There are a number of public safety concerns that we've been discussing as it pertains to South Lansing, and he has agreed to be with us to discuss those. And also to discuss kind of approach to being, you know, obviously he's a new chief, engagement with the Lansing Police Department and the like. And beyond that, the Southwest Action Group's next monthly meeting is November 14th at 6:00 p.m. This will be at the South Side Community Coalition at 2101 West Homes. There are just a myriad of projects that this particular group is exploring and pushing to really kind of advance the Pleasant Grove and Homes District. And so we would certainly encourage anyone interested in attending and finding out what that's all about. Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein, would you like to announce Councilmember Garza's meeting since he's not here?
Are we certain he's having one?
Same, same day.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that he was having one. That will be November 9th, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and it is at the fire station on Miller Road, East Miller Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank council and the public for the outpouring of love and support during this time when my dad died. I got cards from constituents and, you know, it's always nice when, I mean, folks, you know, reach out to you and express that support. And I thank you, the councilmembers who and clerk who attended. And just real quick, you know, my dad clearing out his stuff, treasure trove. He was, he got the Bronze Star twice for valor. He was a Green Beret. He was Korean prisoner of war in Korea. He was a marksman. He was a sharpshooter. He was a spy. I mean, we're finding all of this stuff as we're going through his information, but he was a true patriot. And he was a patriot at a time where, you know, being a patriot during the Vietnam and the Korean War and being an African-American male was, were two things that were not good things. And so I would ask that on Veterans Day, if you just, you know, say a prayer for my dad, his like will never come around again. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other councilmember comments? I wanted to announce there's a series of meetings that the Board of Water and Light is going to be doing as part of their next step as their power utility management. And this is part of an IRP program. These are the dates and the locations for the open houses that they will be having them. November 6th, Wednesday, from 4:30 to 7:00, they will be at the Rio Depot at 1201 South Washington. November 7th, from 4:30 to 7:00, they'll be at the East Lansing Public Library in the large meeting room, and that's at 9:50 Abbott. On November 13th, Wednesday, from 4:30 to 7:00, they'll be at the Delta Township District Library in the Elmwood Room, and that's at 5130 Davenport Drive. November 14th, from 4:30 to 7:00, they'll be at the Alfreda Schmidt Center in the community room, and that's at 5825 Wise Road. And then the last meeting will be November 19th, Tuesday, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and that will be at the Depot as well. This is an opportunity to talk about how they can maintain affordable and reliable power and energy. So with that.
Thank you. Just want to make some, this is the last council meeting before the city election coming up next Tuesday. So those of you who have been issued an absentee ballot, you have a week to get it back to us. I have about almost 5,000 people who've been issued a ballot that haven't returned it yet, so please make a point to get those back to us. Just a little over a week left, and we do have to receive it by 8 o'clock election night. So as we're getting closer, don't rely on the mail unless you put it in the mail in the next few days. The mail is taking a little bit longer these days. And if you are planning to vote at the polls, the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8 o'clock p.m. next Tuesday. Also, just want to remind folks that with Proposal 3 that passed last year, if you're not registered, you can still register in person in my office up until 8 o'clock election night in person, and you just need to bring proof of identity, and if you have photo ID, bring that with you as well. Still lots of opportunities for you to vote. And with that, we are to community event announcements.
Are there any community event announcements this evening? Mr. Jackson, I believe you're wanted down at the podium.
The Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery has had our 5K Run Walk on October 19th in Mount Hope Cemetery, and that raises money to restore monuments and markers within that cemetery. And our winner at 18 minutes and 8 seconds was Brian T. Jackson, City Councilperson, who unequivocally ran away, pardon the pun, before he could be presented with his trophy and his laurel wreath. So we would like to present that to him now.
It's an honor to win the Race to Restore 5K.
And coming in just two seconds behind him was Cheryl Boak's son, Clay.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Any other community event announcements? All right, seeing none, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, and that does include the three scheduled public hearings as well as the items listed on the consent agenda and resolutions for action, ordinances for introduction, ordinances for passage. And just to let folks know, there are a couple of items listed on the agenda that won't be considered tonight, although you can still talk about them if you want. Council will not be considering the nonprofit status for One Starfish tonight, or the ordinance amending Chapter 288 this evening. So if you need to sign in, please jump up right now if you want to speak. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a few things going on on November 2nd.
Get your mic on, sir.
Sorry, thank you.
It's buried underneath it.
It is. Start over. We have a variety of things going on here in the city of Lansing, as always. On November 2nd, we have Drain Day and Leaf Cleanup in Baker and Fabulous Acres. This has been in the neighborhood newsletter for the last few weeks, so if you get that and you've got the info, if you don't, please sign up with our Neighborhoods Department. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the 2nd at 538 Isbell, and you can sign up online. So folks are welcome to come to that. On November 6th, we've got our Citizen Academy graduation at 6:00 p.m. at SWAC, or the South Washington Office Complex on South Washington. So that's exciting to see all the people who are graduating from our Citizens Academy. And last, I want to reference tomorrow, I don't know that this is set or announced yet, so you may be hearing it first here. We're going to have a community conversation, I take that back. LPD is holding a listening session at, on the South Side off of Miller Road. There was a shooting over the weekend, and an after-hours house party that had been broken up by the police and then gathered again, and there was a shooting. And one person died and several people were shot, and many people in the community down there are concerned, and LPD is responding, and they're going to hold a session to listen to the folks. And let me grab the address. It's on Hague Road. It will be at 6294 Hague Road on the South Side, down by Miller. So anybody who is concerned about those shootings or wants to talk, please feel free to attend that listening session. And then finally, tomorrow at 10:30, we also have the Peckham Sculpture Dedication out by Peckham, by the airport. If you've driven by there, then you've seen the sculpture that's gone up, and it's beautiful. We were up there at Fiddler's last week for the, their facade improvement, or no, we were at Taizanos for their facade improvement, and I saw the sculpture there, and it's gorgeous. So you can come to the dedication tomorrow at 10:30 if you're interested in coming on the North Side. So that's mostly what's going on.
Mr. Mayor, what time again was that event, the listening event?
The LPD one, I believe it is going to be at 5:30.
5:30?
And I did not say that, so thank you. 5:30, 6294 Hague Street.
Okay.
On the South Side, down by, down by Miller Road.
And then were you going to make the announcement about the Veterans Day information?
I was, and I wrote it down, and I don't have it. Hold on, I can get that. You know what, I don't have it. I will check our website.
Okay.
I will get the information. I have it in my office, and I went down and grabbed everything and forgot that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll call back on you again.
Okay.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, we have three public hearings. Number one is in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 77, 500-block redevelopment project. Number two is the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan, and number three is the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Development and Finance Plan.
Okay, the first one would be, well, all three of them would be Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so all three of these have come out of development and planning. The first is in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 77 as for the 500-block redevelopment project at 501 South Capitol Avenue and 520 South Washington Avenue. The applicant in this case is 501 Block LLC and 502 Block LLC. This pertains to two parcels consisting of about 2.8 acres. This is the Lake Trust property, as well as the parcel to the south. The project is a mixed-use, multi-phase, multi-building project. It does include retail, service providers, as well as multifamily residential. Phase 1, which the Brownfield actually pertains to, so this Brownfield plan, deals with two separate buildings. So Building 1 would be 501 South Capitol Office. This is a renovation of an existing structure. It would be a mixed-use building with about 24,000 square feet of office and commercial space. It'd be about four floors of residential, and if I'm correct, I believe that consists of 44 apartments, which four would be studio, 28 would be one bedrooms, and 12 would be two bedrooms. The construction period that's stated in the Brownfield Plan, I believe, is November of 2019 to August of 2021. And then Building 2 would actually be a new build, so that would be along South Capitol Avenue and West Hillsdale. There would be about 3,500 square feet of commercial space and about 116 residential apartments. The configuration would be 12 studios, 71 bedrooms, and 34 two-bedrooms. Site demo is scheduled to begin September 20th and completed by May of 22nd. Phase 2, which would consist of a mixed-use building along Washington Avenue and Lenawee, is contingent on the success of Phase 1. The total investment is $31.2 million. In terms of the eligible activities, there is demolition, lead-in asbestos abatement, infrastructure improvement, site prep activities. It does include a 15% contingency, as well as 3% on loans. The eligible activities, including Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Administration, Lansing Brownfield Revolving Fund, and Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Fund, equates to $11,024,756 in eligible capture, of which just under $10 million would be reimbursed to the developer. There's a 10% pass-through, so we will see new taxes to all local taxing units. The length of the tax capture is 19 years, it's capped at 23. And we talked quite a bit about price points and things of that nature at the introduction and the setting of the public hearing, so I'll skip that aspect. In terms of number two, this is in consideration of the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan. The Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority was actually approved back in 2009. The purpose from the outset is basically meant to prevent and reverse deterioration of a incredibly critical corridor to the city of Lansing. State statute does allow for a development plan as well as a finance plan, and the, really the primary tool in terms of the finance plan is the tax increment financing. There are other revenue-generating initiatives that are spelled out in the plan, which includes grants and donations, sponsorships, fees, and things of that nature. The development plan really identifies three focus points related to projects, and that's public infrastructure projects. And just a couple of examples, actually, I'll just give you one example of each. Short-term installed bicycle racks and related equipment, especially near transit stations such as bus stops. The second is correction and prevention of deterioration. An example of a project that's spelled out in the development plan would be to organize efforts to clean and beautify corridor. And the third area is the promotion of neighborhood-aligned economic growth projects, and an example of that would be to create a marketing and branding plan for the corridor. The Board of Directors did meet and approve this development and TIF plan on August 27th. We were lucky enough to have Board Chair Brian Lum with us in development and planning, as well as City Council, where we introduced and set the public hearing. This is a 15-year plan, and much, much in the same way, the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority was also put together to prevent reverse deterioration of, again, a very critical corridor, and that was in 2009 as well. The development plan, much like with the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority's plan, was worked on over a number of years. There was a ton of community engagement. The Board Chair Jonathan Lucko did present to development and planning, as well as this body. The three focal points are complete streets, transit-oriented, and traditional neighborhoods. The, just a few of the projects, there will be, and some of these, they're hoping to get done actually in the first year, installation of bike racks, receptacles, benches, inventory existing businesses and engages, I'm sorry, existing businesses and engage, pursue grant funding for future development projects, the promotion of corridor, and the development of the Authority's webpage, really kind of working on the communication strategy of the Corridor Improvement Authority. Again, plans were approved by the Board of Directors at the August 27th meeting, 5:00. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, before I call the speakers, let me first recognize that we have three letters in support of the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Plan from Neogen Sparrow Hospital and the Keppel Region Community Foundation. And then the first speaker is Hannif, followed by William Pettit.
And as he's coming to the podium, just very quick, I do want to recognize that we have Carl Dorshmer, as well as Hannah Bryant from the Lansing Economic Area Partnership. We appreciate you guys meeting.
Sir.
Hello, my name is Louis Hannif. I'm here today in regards to a claim number 1740 on 214 Lathrop Street in Lansing. This is an investment property that I own. This is a vacant lot next to 210, which I had residence in. So the reason I'm here today is because upon trying to pay my taxes, I was told that there's a $3,140 fine associated with tree debris on the site, which I was not aware of. Now, obviously, some of you are noticing my shirt. I own and operate one of the most successful and reputable tree service companies in the greater Lansing area, and I have for six years. We've done a tremendous amount of work for not only the county, but also the drain commissions and even individuals such as Mayor Shore there and his personal property. So the reason I bring that to light is simply because this is not an issue due to neglect or to not being prompt on the issue. I was just simply not aware of it. When I bought this parcel from Tony Schmidt Realty and did the property transfer affidavit, I gave my personal address of, at the time, I believe it was in Eaton Rapids, and never did I receive anything regarding the matter whatsoever. I called and I asked where the form was sent to, and they told me 214 Lathrop Street. Now, 214 Lathrop Street is a vacant lot, so again, no way of me seeing or getting that notice. Had I got it, I would have simply brought my crew out, removed anything necessary, and been on my way. So the reason I'm here tonight, I missed this morning's meeting as I was already at work, but my goal is to hopefully find a way to resolve this case without being fined $3,140 for something that would have taken my crew and I 15 and 20 minutes to fix. This is the first time I've ever been in any kind of meeting like this, so forgive me if, you know, if it's not as formal as it normally would be, but just want to thank you all for hearing me out. If you have any questions, please ask me, but that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Next, we have William Pettit and then Bob Pena.
William Pettit is first.
Thank you. William Pettit, 616 West Moreland, three doors down from Saginaw. I'm here to support the Saginaw Street Corridor Authority, but I had a couple of concerns and some questions that I think probably are better addressed to the authority, but I just wanted to raise them here. First, I hope that the authority will not spend a lot of money on consultants and advisors. The simple truth of the matter is that the problem with the Saginaw corridor is the speed limit, the lack of parking, the inaccessibility of the businesses because of the speed limit. I mean, it's, after 10 o'clock at night, it literally is Daytona 500 along there. So I hope that that issue is addressed by the authority, because that's the bottom line. The second consideration I hope that is addressed, and whether this is through tax savings or tax credits or whatever, is the number of vacant buildings on the strip. It's just, you know, it's vacant building after vacant building, and that really needs to be addressed. My other concern is that a lot of the board members of the authority are business people, and I think that the authority should have been skewed towards residents. There may be, I think by statute, one of them is a resident, but I think the resident should be more heavily involved in the planning process. A couple of concerns I have is, first, has there been any accumulation of historical data as to whether there will be increases in property tax such that there will be some capture? In other words, will there be any money to put towards projects? So that is my first question and concern, and then my second one would be, and I didn't see this in the act, but are any of the taxing agencies, such as the Community College, the county, are they able to opt out? In other words, how much money is going to be available for this project or for these projects? So those are my two concerns. I'm very happy that Saginaw Street is becoming a, or at least has come forward as a public issue, and I wish the authority all the success in the world, but they've got a, they've got a long, a big hill to climb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bob Pena, and then Chris Roofs.
First of all, apologies to Mr. Pettis, overzealous a little bit. My name's Bob Pena, I reside at 2100 Vine Street in the East Side. I've been in discussion with a few businesses on the 6,000 block and also the 2,000 block. There is a concern with parking as these developments are going up, especially in the 6, like where the Myers Project is in the 600 block. So I just want to make that known to the council people that that is an issue of concern with a few businesses in the 600 block of the Stadium District. And also in the 2,000 block, there's also changed traffic patterns already as we speak. In the last week or so, there've been large buses and semis going through the neighborhood streets, just breaking up branches, so.
Sir, are you talking to?
But this is in relation to the Michigan Avenue project.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes. So, and I'll just keep it, parking and traffic issues are a concern. As a resident that uses bicycle lanes, thank you Commissioner, I'm sorry, City Councilperson Hussein, for the bike facilities that are planned for Michigan Avenue. That's needed and appreciated, and thank you for your service, and thank you, guys. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Roofs, and then Jim Herbert.
Good evening, my name is Chris Roofs. I own a restaurant on Michigan Avenue. I wanted to speak in relation to the Michigan Avenue Development Project. I don't know that what my comments will be relevant to what's being discussed tonight, but I wanted to make them in either case. Wanted to initially say that I'm new to the area and new to discovering the Michigan Avenue Development Project, and I think it's a wonderful idea. I am thrilled by the idea of restoring the area, putting more, somewhat more green spaces in, better bike and bus access. That being said, I do have one concern that I wanted to bring forward, and that is that I believe the plan is predicated on the reduction of Michigan Avenue to a single lane in either direction. You know, some of the businesses that may not adversely affect, but for those of us in the hospitality industry, that would certainly hurt us if traffic is diminished, and it would also hurt us if transit times are increased. We do do a significant lunch business, as well as some at happy hour. Both of those would be disrupted by anything that diverted traffic to, my presumption would be either Mount Hope or Saginaw. And so I just wanted to bring that forward to the council and make it known that there are some of us that have concerns about the potential reduction, and really, the increase in bus and bike traffic might contribute to that as well. I have a mixed mind about that, because I certainly think that would be an admirable and beneficial thing to cultivate, but just from the perspective of a business owner in the area, there are certainly some concerns about anything that would either reduce traffic volume or increase transit times. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Jim Herbert, and then Mary Reynolds.
Well, I'm Jim Herbert. I reside in a historical home at 1704 Jerome Street and also own the property at 120 Marshall. That's a home that was built in the late 1800s that we restored. I further appear tonight as Chairman of the Board of Neogen Corporation, a worldwide food safety company that has its world headquarters within less than a half mile of the Michigan Corridor. We employ over 650 people here in Lansing who work within a half a mile of Michigan Avenue, and many of them reside in the same corridor. I cautiously support the continuation of the corridor plan, but I am concerned about the damages that it may cause to the surrounding neighborhoods. I believe that we should be especially cautious not to have Michigan Avenue be a concrete canyon with high-rise apartment buildings extending from sidewalk to property line. This is damaging for a number of reasons. Case in point would be the corner property at Michigan Avenue and Marshall Street, which adjoins my two properties. The current developer proposes to erect a four-story apartment building. I believe that developer's plan is detrimental to the city and its residents for a number of reasons. First, Marshall Street is a main connector between Grand River and Michigan Avenue and doesn't need another tall building with numerous parking issues right where the traffic pours into Michigan. Marshall serves as a pedestrian and automobile traffic for four schools that are in the area. From a selfish standpoint, such a building would block the sunlight from our homes. I'd no longer be able to look out my bedroom window and see daylight, but instead, we'll look into the bedrooms of dozens of apartments. A prior developer had planned a two-story building on this site and with connections back to the neighborhood, a bit of green space, wrought iron fence, and so on. This would have been an extension of Marshall Avenue back into the historical districts behind it. The new developer has changed the plan to four stories, which would push to the property lines and I believe have inadequate parking. The reason for the change is that the four-story structure will be more profitable. Of course, I'm certainly not blind to profits. The company that we started here 37 years ago is now public and has a market capitalization value of over $3 billion. Neogen has purchased, restored, and used as 20 buildings in this same area of the city, and in each case, we did so to help the community and with the residents' support. I make, in closing, I'll make a plea to the committee, to City Council, to the mayor's staff, and the would-be developers not to build concrete canyons to block the sunlight from the historic surrounding neighborhoods that are also going through continual improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And next is Mary Reynolds, who passes. So, we are to the referral of the public hearings.
All three public hearings will go back to Development and Planning Committee.
Then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, the only item left on the consent agenda will be the item under one, which is a tribute and recognition of Karen Deanna Sturtivant.
All right, we have a motion on the table for the consent agenda. Are there any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Thank you.
We are to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
The first item before us is an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act or an Oprah District for ANC Holdings for property at 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. We had a public hearing on this October 4th. All comments seem to be supportive. The applicant in this case is ANC Holdings LLC, which is a nonprofit subsidiary of Allen Neighborhood Center. The reason for the request is that they did obtain this property in 2018 after working very hard over a number of years to figure out a pathway to ownership, and they're looking to redevelop the property by rehabbing the two-story complex, adding a third floor along Kalamazoo Street, and then they want to do three-story additions of both the east and the west end. In total, they're looking at about 50,000 square feet of space, 30,000 square feet of residential, and 20,000 square feet of commercial space. In terms of the residential, they're looking to construct 29 apartments, which are considered mixed-income apartments. And then with regards to the commercial, they currently, the Allen Neighborhood Center, the incubator kitchen that has been discussed quite a bit at this dais, as well as happen dance, is positioned on the first floor. They will be adding to that by adding an accelerator kitchen, which will be for graduates of the incubator, as well as they are looking right now potentially partnering with the ISD on culinary arts programming. This property has been determined to be obsolete based on a myriad of factors. This was constructed over about a 40-year period, and if you've ever been to the site, it's very obvious. I mean, you can actually see the different construction phases, and so floor plan is convoluted. There's all kinds of issues with ceiling heights and things of that nature. They do need to look at the heating and cooling systems. It's absolutely outdated. Phase one to determine that contamination exists. There were prior uses such as gas stations and dry cleaners, things of that nature. The applicant would like to begin demo pretty much immediately after this district is actually created. They understand that by approving an Oprah District, that in no way means that this council will approve an Oprah certificate. They have to go through the process just like everybody else. But with that being said, I would move the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, District for ANC Holdings for the property at 1611 East Kalamazoo Street.
You have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any questions or concerns, but I would encourage my colleagues that with this project, we all know this is totally an obsolete building, and, but this has been an issue to bring energy and positive housing on the East Side, particularly on the Kalamazoo Corridor. We have Neogen, we have, will be having the Allen Market Place, and this is exciting because as our population is aging, we need more aging-in-place housing, and this will fit that need. This is mixed income. There will be very affordable units, and most of the units pretty much are spoken for. So, I mean, this is how excited everybody is, and this will enable our seniors who have lived on the East Side for many years to remain on the East Side at an affordable price. So, whatever we can do to get this forward, those of us on the East Side would appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns? Councilmember Dunbar.
I was just going to say, and thankfully, it's on the north side of the street, so it won't block any sunlight to Neogen.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
The second item before us is a obsolete property rehabilitation act certificate this time. The district was actually established back in 2007, and this is for Blackboard District LLC for property at 1030 South Holmes Street. So, obviously, this is the property that served as Home Street School starting in 1925. Starting in about 2007, it has a pretty complicated history. Spartan Internet did receive a Oprah District and certificate from this council back in 2007. They were unable to bring that development across the goal line. The district remains, but the certificate was revoked earlier this year. Blackboard District LLC did come into possession, I believe it was this past May, and they are looking to convert the three-story structure into 41 studio and one-bedroom apartments. The building is incredibly old. Obviously, the obsolescence was established via a myriad of issues as well. The rehab will include electrical, plumbing, and HVAC overhaul, roof repairs, new kitchen cabinets and countertops, drywall, flooring, masonry repairs, asphalt and landscaping, and more. The Oprah certificate being considered is a 12-year certificate. That is the max allowed per state statute. They are looking to begin construction in the spring of 2019, and they're looking to conclude by June of 2021. We do have Jeff Dehan with Blackboard District LLC with us. I apologize, we actually moved this out of committee before he arrived, so he didn't have an opportunity to discuss this earlier, but if there are any questions, he is here. With that being said, I would move the Oprah certificate for Blackboard District LLC for property at 1030 South Holmes Street.
Are there questions or concerns? Councilmember Washington.
Again, I have no questions or concerns, but again, I would ask my colleagues to look at this seriously. This building has been vacant for a number of years, and in communication with the neighborhood organization and the neighborhood leaders, they are very excited about this project. Although it is considered to be market-rate apartments, it's market rate for the area, so it will, the price point will fit in nicely in the neighborhood where they are being built. These are not going to be high-end apartments in the middle of a working-class neighborhood. So, I need to make that clear. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have agreed also to keep the green space and to provide park area for the surrounding neighborhood, as they have been using it in the past, and they have very vibrant neighborhood activities such as Easter egg hunts. So, the neighborhood is extremely grateful for that aspect of the project also.
Okay, are there any other questions? Again, I need to see a nod from the developer. You are looking at keeping the green space, is that correct? Pardon? That's correct. Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
So, we have a couple of public hearings to set. The first is the setting of the public hearing in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 75, Capital City Market Brownfield Redevelopment Project at 636 East Michigan and a portion of 119 South Large Street. Anybody that is here to present on this, I'm going to ask that you come down to the well, because I'm assuming that there's more than just Carl. With that being said, very quickly, as you come on down, you will recall that council approved a $10.4 million, 30-year Brownfield Plan in November of last year. It was tied to about $42 million in private investment to bring apartments and a grocery store and a hotel to the 600 block of Michigan Avenue. With that being said, there have been some things that have precipitated a need to amend the Brownfield Plan, and so we are going to get a quick presentation on that. It's actually a pretty simple request. Doesn't change the number in terms of eligible reimbursement to the developer, but with that being said, it is a change that needs to be vetted past this body. So, with that being said, I would assume we're going to start with Carl. He'll do introductions, and then we'll move on.
And the plan is in your folders. Carl, please, thank you.
Thank you. This plan was before the council once before and was approved. As you know, the project is well underway. It's a great project, hotel apartments and a downtown grocery store. But in the course of their construction, they have discovered that they need to add just a small, tiny sliver of land to the Brownfield Plan in order for them to be able to do additional activities. But I want to stress that none of the numbers in the plan have changed at all. All this does is just add one little piece into the plan. But I'd like to introduce to you, we have Jason Kilde, who's with Gillespie Group, and then also Jessica Debone, who is with PM Environmental. And Jason can give you a little update on the project, and then Jessica can tell you, you know, how the plan has been amended. So, Jason?
Jason, make sure the green light is on, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for hearing us on this. The 600 project, 600 East Michigan Capital City Market Project is well underway at this point. We are now, we've had the podium built, and we're starting to frame some of the apartments. I think this week you'll start to see some of the hotels get framed above that, too. Obviously, lots of site work, demolition has already occurred. As we got into our footing and foundations of this project, we found that our lot line was very close to that of the Liskies Building to the south, and there was really no feasible way to get our foundations in without expending a lot of money. So, we worked with Mr. Carpenter and the Liskies team and bought a small sliver. So, that's what brings us here for the Brownfield Amendment, if you will, tonight. But overall, progress is going good. We're still on track to have the building completed by late summer next year. Turning it over to Meyer. Hopefully, they're open by mid to late September, and the hotel to follow sometime before the end of the year. Apartments will open when the Meyer opens as well.
So, just for clarification, what we're talking about is adding to the description of the Brownfield, this additional sliver of land.
That's correct. If you look in the plan, there's a legal description.
Orange.
That's correct. And they've added that small, it's about .06 acres of land, it's very small.
All right. Go ahead, thank you.
So, that's correct. It's about .06 acres of land being added to the plan, ultimately just to ensure that the legal description of the property in question that was approved originally matches what it is now today. There will be some eligible activities taking place on that portion of the property, so we also just want to make sure that we're in compliance when we eventually submit for reimbursement.
Are there any questions, Councilmember or Vice President Spatafor?
Not really about the plan, but I noticed in the renderings, there is a blimp. Is the Gillespie Group investing in a blimp?
If you talk to Pat, I'm sure you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Seeing none, Councilmember Hussein.
The public hearing as set forth in the resolution would be for November 18th, so I would move that we set a public hearing in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 75 as amended, Capital City Market Brownfield Redevelopment Project. Again, that would be November 18th at 7:00 p.m. on the 10th floor of City Hall.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. So, we'll see you at the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember.
We'll very quickly change out our presenters, so if I could have the folks that are here to discuss Brownfield Plan Number 78, come on down to the well. This is in the consideration of setting a public hearing for Brownfield Plan Number 78, the Temple Redevelopment Project at 502 East Caesar E Chavez Avenue. We already have one public hearing scheduled for November 18th, because we have two processes kind of taking place concurrently. We had a Brownfield Plan that was approved by council, I believe it was in 2009, Brownfield Plan Number 45, and that was for officially, I believe it was called the Old Town Temple Building Rehab Project. That project was never executed. The Michigan Community Capital Group did purchase this in February, they desired to add retail and office space and things of that nature to what many refer to as the Old Temple Club. So, with that being said, we are going to have Carl again introduce our presenters, and we will discuss Brownfield Plan Number 78.
Carl.
Thank you. The Temple Club Building, most of you familiar with, it's been vacant for quite some time. It's a beautiful building on the north side of Lansing, but it's a very challenging building because it was built for a specific purpose, and at one time, it was a nightclub, but that was a long time ago. It was purchased by a developer who tried on several occasions to put a deal together, but ultimately could not. There was a Brownfield Plan approved, there was an Oprah approved by this council, but both of those, the Oprah has been revoked, and the Brownfield Plan itself will be terminated so that we can kind of wipe the table clean. And now, Michigan Community Capital, formerly known as the Michigan Magnet Fund, they have a lot of experience throughout the state doing mixed-use development, and they've purchased the building, and they have plans to turn it into, you know, a great development in an area that really needs it. And so, they've come to us, and we've worked with them, put together this Brownfield Plan. There's a lot of challenges to the building, but the plan they've come up with, it's not a historical preservation, but it keeps the historical features of the building. You'll see in the handout that it looks a lot the same, but they're increasing the utility to the building, the functionality of the building to make it really work in terms of making a space usable. So, we've put the plan together, the plan was presented to the committee, and I'd like to introduce to you two folks we have here tonight. First is Marilyn Crowley, and she represents Michigan Community Capital, and then we have Dave Van Heren, who's with Tri-Terra. And Marilyn can give you a little overview of the project, and then Dave can outline the Brownfield Plan. So, Marilyn?
Thank you. Okay. Hi, thank you for having me. So, I work with Michigan Community Capital. We're a nonprofit, CDFI and CDE, Community Development Entity, Community Development Finance Institution. So, we lend to community development projects and invest in community development projects as well as develop them. So, we saw this building, and as a nonprofit, we're able to take significantly below market rate returns, and so that's one reason we're able to do it, is because we don't have to make market rate returns. So, what we're planning on doing here is basically removing the mezzanine that exists on the second floor and infilling that with four floors of apartments. There's a lot of volume in there, especially in the attic space. There's like between seven and 11 feet in the attic, and so we're actually removing that structure and building a new structure inside of it. We're building 31 apartments, and then the first floor will be an office suite, which will include our offices as well as additional office space available for rent and a commercial space on the corner. So, we're actually increasing the glazing on, that'd be the corner of Cedar. Yeah, and so that it'll be more desirable for retail, and then we're also doing a parking ramp to increase the parking density. I think that's all I have to say. We, like Carl said, we are not doing a, like a historic tax credit project, just because that would be prohibitive. that would be prohibitive, we would have to keep that second floor to be open, and there's not a lot of great uses for that space. But we are keeping the large windows, they will no longer be stained glass, but kind of those big arched windows will still be there, and all of the beautiful entryway features will remain, as well as the second floor staircase going up. So we'll keep a lot of the shape of the building, but make it more usable for apartments.
Okay.
So on the Brownfield, property qualifies as a eligible property due to its status as being functionally obsolete. In addition, there's asbestos and lead-based paint that exists within the building structure itself. The, when looking at eligible Brownfield activities associated with this property, we estimate that the eligible activities exceed 2.5 million. What we're proposing is a maximum, a 30-year plan, and that would allow for capture reimbursement of, would be limited to 2.1 million for reimbursement to the developer. Majority of that cost would be for the vertical parking structure, it's going to be a two-story parking structure that would accommodate 51 parking spaces. Also, it would cover demolition activities, asbestos abatement, and lead abatement. The, of the 2.1 million in capture for reimbursement, let me back up, there'd be a total of 2.8 million dollars of new taxes generated from this investment, from this project. With the 2.1 million in reimbursement to the developer, there would be 89,000 that would go towards the state Brownfield Revolving Fund, and then 79,000 that would go towards for Brownfield Administration, and then deposits into the local Brownfield Fund for use on other projects. With that, there would be, with the 10% pass-through, on the 30-year plan, 424,000 would be new taxes that would not be captured as part of this project. So even though we've got costs that exceed what's allowed under the plan, we still are adhering to the city's policy for that 10% pass-through, and then we're not applying any interest on the Brownfield TIF plan itself at all. So it does include a 15% contingency to allow some flexibility there, but we're not applying any interest on our plan. There is a presentation here that outlines in more detail as far as the specific eligible activities, but again, that's for the environmental assessment, including asbestos and lead assessments and abatement, demolition, some site prep activities, and then a majority of it's going towards the parking structure itself.
Are there questions at this time? Councilmembers, Spitzley and Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. In your presentation, you said that you're not including the interest, is that what you said? And that your costs exceed more than what you're asking for, but you're asking for a 30-year. So, is that the maximum, 30 years that you can ask for?
Maximum.
Right. So what there, I'm assuming then it's because the project doesn't work if it's less than 30 years?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Spatafor.
Good luck, first of all, and then, secondly, I really appreciated some of what you talked about in terms of the historical nature of it, but also the density in parking, that's something we've kind of talked about here, is we don't need more parking lots in the city, and I appreciate the effort to try and include it all onsite in as condensed a space as possible. And again, good luck.
Thank you.
Are there other questions at this time? Councilmember Washington.
I just think it should be added that we did ask in committee if this was under the New Universal Development Agreement, and it is, so, correct? And so the executive order that the mayor put in place will be applied to this development.
Are there other questions? My question would be, who is going to own this development?
Sure, so the LLC, Lansing Acquisitions 500 LLC, will be the owner, and that will be owned by Michigan Community Capital.
Which is a nonprofit.
Correct.
So, how does that work for the taxes?
I think our nonprofit status doesn't affect our property taxes. We pay property taxes on all of our properties.
Okay, all right. Are these market rate, or are these, are these market rate?
Yes.
Okay. And what's your price point?
We have a range between $700 a month, all the way up to $1,600.
Okay. And I think, Carl, I asked you whether the Cedar Street School, whether that was fully occupied?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to get an answer on that, but your question is, it's a commercial building.
I know, but they're going to have commercial space right next to it, so...
Yeah, I haven't got an answer for you, but I can get it for you.
Okay, if you would, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Washington.
Ma'am, correct me, did you not say in committee that you are actually going to be moving your offices onto the first floor?
Correct, so we'll be the anchor tenant on the first floor, but we're not a very big organization, so we'll take three or four office suites, and then the rest will be available for lease. But I would say, in total, there would probably only be between four and six small office suites, so it's not a ton of space available, and we are preliminarily talking with a tenant for the retail already. We don't have anything signed yet, but we hope to have most of that space accounted for before we start construction.
Okay, thank you. With that, Councilmember Hussein.
So, again, and I really appreciate the question pertaining to the price points. One of the things that we've tried to do, and I think it actually started with Councilman Jackson's predecessor, Jessica Yorko, who started asking the question of development and planning, but really wanting to highlight kind of the diversity, as we bring in new housing into the city of Lansing, that diversity of housing in terms of type, in terms of price point. So, you know, I know my time on council, we brought in low-income and affordable, what we call workforce residential apartments, which is what this would be, and higher-end, so certainly appreciate that line of questioning. But with that being said, I would move that we set a public hearing in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 78 for November 18th at 7:00 p.m.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
We are to the Committee on General Services.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. The first thing we have before us is the resolution regarding, excuse me, the claim disposition claim 1740 from Louis Hampton, who we just heard of, heard from, $3,140 for trash violations at 214 North Lathrop Street. And what we were told at committee, we did have the department had from Coal Compliance at our committee meeting, and what he said to us was, the property was cited for the trees that were cut down and left on the property on October 30th, 2018. The notice was sent to the taxpayer of record at the time the owner of the property listed his address at 214 Lathrop. The owner of this property did not update his address with the assessor until August of this year, and also has not paid the winter 2018 and summer 2019 taxes. By ordinance, the office is required to send all notifications to the taxpayer of record. The owner of this property owns a tree-cutting service and should have been aware after the trees were cut down that they could not be left on the property. The violations were on the property for at least 20 days, from the time their office was sent notification to the time of the contractor showed up, this office, their office recommends denial of the claim. We did, we are recommending denial of the claim, and as I said, we had only Mr. Sanford's input because the claimant was not there to offer any information. So with that, I would move the resolution to deny the claim.
Vice President Spatafor and Councilmember Dunbar.
I'm sorry for the questions, I know you, I talked about this in committee, but of the $3,140, how much of this is penalties and interest?
Pardon?
How much of this is penalties and interest?
$265 is the only, is the administrative fee, the rest is the trash fee. Councilmember Dunbar.
And the trash fee is solely for the logs?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. First, who cut the logs, to begin with? Do you know?
Yep.
I understand you.
We, we had no, we did not know who cut the trees. All we know is the trees were there, and they were sited.
Okay, well, I'm just going to throw out there, based on other council members and other people in the public's experience, that the Board of Water and Light cuts trees down all the time and leaves the logs where they sit, forever. We don't cite them, we don't cite the property where that was done. So, I have concern that we're going to hold a citizen to a different standard than we've ever held the board for any kind of tree removal and leaving the logs sit. The other thing is, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the date that he purchased the house, but we, we have...
It's a vacant.
It's a, okay, vacant property. Most people, when they do buy a house, they have to do like a property transfer affidavit that's signed over to the assessor, and that's done through the closing. And I don't know how this was purchased, but I'm not sure necessarily that knowing to notify the assessor of the change in the ownership, because we've, we used to have people that came through, and I remember this years ago, where the two systems weren't talking to each other from code, and there would be a violation at the time that you bought something, but you didn't know it at the time that you closed with the realtor, and then the thing is there. So I don't, I don't know what the date of the purchase was, or if the purchase was around the time of this, I don't, can we, can we ask these questions? Could he answer them?
My...
Because my inclination would be to say, you know, allow the claim if I get the right answers.
My recommendation would be, since the claimant was not there at the meeting, that if the chair of the committee is willing to pull this claim, to invite him back, and hopefully he will show up at that meeting, so that the discussion, some of those questions can be answered. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I think that's generous to give him the opportunity to come back, so I think some questions need to be of, did he cut the trees down, or was it a, you know, what precipitated the cutting down of these trees? That's the first thing. And who owned the property at the time? But I, I agree, I mean, I, you know, when the Board of Water and Light, and thank God they did, they came through and they cut down a number of trees, they left the logs where they lay. My neighbors have had logs in their backyard for two years, huge, big chunks of logs, and so that, that's a concern for me that, so I would, when we, when we bring it back, those are kind of some of the questions I'd like to know, is who cut them down, and, yeah, some of the, and the same concerns that Councilmember Dunbar has.
So with that, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'm happy to withdraw this motion for tonight, and I would let Mr. Hampton know that we really would like to see you at the committee. It will be November 18th, 8:00 a.m., right here. So that should give you plenty of time to be able to adjust your schedule, and we can get those questions answered, so I am happy to do that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Washington, your next item.
The next item we have before us is a resolution for the fireworks display for Silver Bells, November 22nd. The fireworks will be lit in a vacant lot behind the Capitol, I think it's a big old parking lot, and all of the appropriate signatures have been received, so with that, I would move the resolution to approve the fireworks for Silver Bells.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember...
We're to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Hussein.
All right, we are looking to set a show cause hearing in consideration of orders to make, save, or demolish. This is for 818 Nip Avenue. It's actually only deals with the garage structure at this property. The original red tag date was 1/2/2019, it was submitted into the make, save, or demolish process on, I think it was July 2nd of 2019. The established, let me see, estimated cost of repairs to make the garage safe was estimated at $9,072. In terms of make, save, or demolish eligibility, it was determined by the fact that the garage has been vacant for more than 180 days, and repairs exceed the building's state equalized value. The demo board did hold a show cause hearing, and they issued a 60-day, that expired on September 25th, and the issue is now obviously before the city council for consideration. Scott Sanford was into public safety at our last meeting, he did recommend a 60-day make, save, or demolish on this, based on the fact that no permits have been pulled and no work has been done. So the show cause hearing would be set for November 18th.
We have a motion before us, and even though that garage does look like it's fire damaged, it's not, it's the way it has deteriorated, so that's why the 60 days instead of 30. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
The next setting, let's see, the next show cause hearing actually does deal with a fire damage structure, so this would be to set a show cause hearing in consideration of orders to make, save, or demolish for the property at 819 Cleveland Street. Again, this is a fire damage structure, the original red tag date was August 30th of 2016. It was submitted into make, save, or demolish process on May 5th, no, sorry, May 3rd of 2019. The state equalized value has been estimated at $24,500, and the estimated cost of repairs has been determined to be about $71,400. The eligibility for the make, save, or demolish is determined by vacancy of property being more than 180 days, and the cost of repairs exceeding the SEV. Again, the demo board did help, hold a show cause hearing, that was on June 27th of 2019. They ordered a 30-day, as state statute allows for with fire damage structures, that expired on July 27th of 2019. Again, no work has been done, no permits have been pulled, so this has been sent to us for our review against Scott Sanford, who was into public safety, and he is recommending a 30-day. The show cause hearing for this one would also be set for November 18th.
Are there any questions or concerns? This particular property did not have any insurance, so we do not have anything in escrow to help offset the cost. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
The last show cause hearing we're looking to set is in consideration of orders to make, save, or demolish for the property at 3309 Viking Road. The original red tag date was December 28th of 2018. This was submitted into make, save, or demolish on June 28th, 2019. The state equalized value is $41,000, estimated cost of repairs is about $107,000. As you can see from the pictures, there are a number of issues. The demo board had a show cause hearing on July 25th of 2019. At that time, they did issue a 60-day, which expired on September 25th of 2019. It was then sent to us, no permits have been pulled, as was the case with the other two properties, and again, this is being recommended by our housing inspector for a 60-day make, save, or demolish. Show cause hearing will be set for November 18th at 7:00 p.m.
Are there other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to the Committee on Public Services.
Vice President Spatafor.
Good evening. So we have a resolution that was passed by the Committee on Public Service urging the state to invest more dollars into infrastructure and change the road funding formula. This is part of the Public Service Board's recommendations on infrastructure. We understand that the task is Herculean, but thought we'd want to go on record, and the resolve section says, "The Lansing City Council and the administration demand a significant state government investment in Michigan's transportation infrastructure, and appeals to state officials to adjust the distribution formula to better recognize road funding based on usage." I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Because this is my election year, and I have talked to so many people, I think there is a huge misunderstanding that we just have all the money in the world to fix our streets, and that we are just not doing it. And I certainly understand people being very upset about our roads and, and our sidewalks, but I think what, what isn't well-known is that we depend on the money from the state to fix our roads. We do not have that kind of money in the, in the city budget to fix our roads. So when there are the complaints that I am hearing so much, we have to understand that at the state level, they have to pull it together, and they have to find a way to give this revenue sharing back to the municipalities and the other, so that we can fix our roads. This, thank you so much for this resolution, because we need the money, we need it desperately, and they just need to find a way to get it to us so we can get our streets fixed.
Vice President Spatafor, and then Councilmember... Vice President Spatafor, and then Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes, I think we hear that a lot from all of our constituents about the roads. And I know no one likes to have orange barrels in front of their house, but we would like to, some more revenue for that. And interesting about Michigan's road formula is it's not been updated since '51? That's the legislator. 1951, and it treats every road in the state very similarly. So, streets in the U.P. where there's no traffic are treated the same as Michigan Avenue, SAG, and all those types of streets. So, that's why the end of this resolution encourages a better distribution formula that would actually pay on usage versus just simply a fact that a road exists, so.
Councilmember Dunbar.
No need to, because he just said what I was gonna say.
Oh, okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Thank you.
And we're to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I would move the resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement for ratification between Capital City Labor Program, non-supervisory unit, and the City of Lansing. And in that is a three-year contract that expires on June 30th, 2022. This is for the police officers in the city and the non-supervisory positions in the Police Department. For each of those years, it's a three-year deal. You'll see a 3.0 and a 3.0 and a 2.25 raise on the salary. An effective November 1, 2019, all folks hired into that unit will no longer be eligible for retiree healthcare, rather, a retiree health savings plan, which will do quite a bit to dramatically curb the arc of the increase in expenses for our OPEB liabilities, the pension liabilities that we've talked about that have been recommended by the financial health team that have been supported by this body and the mayor's office in hiring our SRO. So, we are, I'm sorry, our chief restructuring officer, chief strategy officer. So, that's all good news and very, very good. I'm glad we could see, get this deal signed. So, I will stop talking.
Do you have any other questions on that? With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Vice President Spatafor.
The next item is a resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the Capital City Labor Program's supervisory unit and the City of Lansing. I move the resolution. Same details in terms of three-year contract, 3.0, 3.0, 2.25 raises over those three years, and a November 1 effective date of the closure of the retiree healthcare benefit for new, new hires. And there's that.
All right, thank you. Other, other questions or concerns? Yes.
I would just like to say, I do really appreciate the administration's efforts on these. These are huge wins for the city's financial well-being and it's also huge for the, for the men and women of the Police Department who do, who do that work. I think it's important that we recognize that both sides gave and both sides got. And it was, this is a mutually beneficial win for the city and the employees of the Police Department.
Mayor Shor.
Thank you. I know I don't usually weigh in. I want to clarify, I would like to, to call out Nick Tate, who was our labor negotiator, and now Shelby Freyer, who's our chief strategy officer, both who were involved in negotiations, in addition to the, the men and women of the CCLP, supervisory and non-supervisory. Tom Krug comes to mind. They spent a lot of time at the table and they all really care about, not only their members, but the City of Lansing. And I think this was a, an incredible deal they were able to, to work out. One of them was unanimous, one of them had a few no votes, but this was overwhelmingly supported on both sides of the table and we were able to come together. So, I appreciate the, you know, that the administration was able to get this done. But Nick Tate on our office really went above and beyond. This is his first year as labor negotiator and he's doing a great job. So, just wanted to, to give a shout out to him and to the labor negotiators for the, the police officers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
And we're to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a number of things on our agenda. One of the things we have on our agenda, and we have on our agenda regularly, are sole source, sole source purchase agreements. And we have various departments come in and talk about them. We've had the Police Department recently come in, LPD, talk about sole source agreements. We had, we've had a sole source purchase agreement, Economic Development Planning Department request for info, traffic, parking solution, for the purchase of parking digital signage solution on our agenda the last two times. And we've extended an invitation for the parking director to come and talk to us about it. And we will extend an invitation for a third time for him to come and talk to us about that. So, with that, I'll go to our next grant acceptance, which is 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is a renewal grant that we get money from FEMA. And this goes into our emergency management department. 39.6% of the dollars goes for wages and benefits. The grant amount is $65,645. And it's, and it's a performance grant. The application, the grant period is from October 9th, I'm sorry, October 1st, 2018 to September 30th, 2019. But it is a performance grant, and so, we cannot get reimbursement until all the criteria is, is met to receive reimbursement. Matching funds are cash or in kind and covered with existing and dedicated budgetary funding. In this case, it looks like it's, I'm, I'm sorry, the matching funds are cash or in kind. I apologize. The fund amount is $65,645. And with that, I move the resolution to accept the grant.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. The next one we have is a grant acceptance for Domestic Violence Court Grant. This is a new grant for council, put forth by our newest judge on the bench, Judge Ward, who's here. And we applaud her proactivity and what she's done on this. This one is a three-year grant from the Department of Health and Human Services with two one-year renewals. Okay, good. And what it does is it's allocated to assist with funding of 54A District Court Special T Domestic Violence Court. And it, it will fund a coordinator, domestic violence court coordinator and probation's officer. The focus is on the second offender or the second offense, which is a misdemeanor. And it's, it is, it is, it will allow the judge direct oversight over these, these, the folks that come through. Part of it is done for training conferences and, most importantly, home visits. It is modeled after other domestic violence courts in the state of Michigan, providing support for victims through this oversight. And with that, I will move the resolution for acceptance.
Vice President Spatafor.
I just want to, real quick, echo some of Councilmember Spitzley's sentiments on this issue. I really want to thank Judge Ward for really digging in and reshaping a lot of the services that we can offer in the courts. And you were complimenting the committee for a lot of your work in, single-handedly pushing this grant forward. So, I'm happy to support it, but just really wanted to make sure you were recognized for the work you're already doing in a very short period of time on the bench.
Thank you. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you. I, I also want to speak to Judge Ward, to her sensitivity. She knows my history. And, and I am a severe domestic violence survivor. And, and I did not support the last grant that came through, because that was dealing with felonies. But this one is so inclusive and it, it deals with the issue long before it becomes a felony. And what I really appreciate about this is the fact that there's money in there for the victims to make sure the victims are actually being talked to and being made sure that, that things are going well. So, thank you so much for your sensitivity to come to me a month or so ago and educate me on this. And, and I'm really excited about this one. I'm, I'm really hoping the best for the offenders and for the victims. Maybe we can actually see some really good, positive things come from this. So, thank you.
Are there other questions or concerns? Councilmember Spitzley, my question would be, is this voluntary, similar to sobriety court? That you, no, it's not. You're ordered.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't think it was voluntary.
And then, how long are they then being under the probation officer and, and the training and the things? Is that a year? Come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Council President. A lot of the models from some of the mentor courts I've been working with have 24 months for probation.
24 months, okay. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. And I would add that we noticed on the application that it's an annual grant. And we would, we'd asked about how long, given that it's 24 months ideally. Apparently, the state came to you and asked you to do this and, and is looking at a five-year term, at least for this phase of funding. And if you wanted to speak to that, so that there's some continuity in the program.
Yes, I was approached by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and they granted a three-year grant with two one-year renewals. And they told me their expectation is that it'll be for five years.
Nice.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I would add is that Anethia was so impressed, because she wrote the whole grant herself and submitted it herself. And her salary is the match. So, there's no money, there's no money from the city into this. And it's like, you know, almost $200,000. We don't see that often. So, thank you for that.
Oh, just to clarify, that isn't her salary, for anyone listening out there.
She's not making $200,000.
I, I just want to clarify.
No, the grant is for that and the match is a portion of the hours from
She probably wishes she did.
Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And, and I would ask Judge Ward that you, we have one more grant that, when you left, we thought would be a good kind of coordinating grant. So, I'm gonna say that one, if you could just hang on here for a second and listen to that one, too. So, the, the next one is the Michigan Drug Court Grant Program, the DWI Sobriety Court. We've had this funding since 2005. And it is the
Right, there's elders and stuff.
Mm-hmm, yep. And it is the Felony Sobriety Court. It's the funded amount of $40,999.15. I don't know where that came from. But the city match is $2,350. And I, and I believe that that city match is for, is, is, is employment, is, I'm sorry, I lost it, is, is salary. Thank you. So, we've had this since 2005, the Felony Sobriety Court. And so, we got some statistics. And so, they said that there were 196 admitted, 176 discharges, and 109 successful discharges. There are 20 people in the program currently. And since, between 2012 and 2016, the recidivism rate is only 6.8%. So, that's, I think that's very, very good. So, it is, it is definitely working. We're doing some good stuff with this DWI Sobriety Court and now with the Domestic Violence Grant and Court. I think it's, it's great what we're doing to help our residents. With that, I move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Spitzley, you've got one more.
Yep, thank you, Madam President. This is through the Lansing Police Department, but it's the Victims of Crime Act Victims Assistance Grant. And it's, it's administered through the CARE Program, which is the Capital Area Response Effort Administers, Capital Area Response Effort. And we've been doing this for 23 years. It is a grant for $166,095 of a city match of $41,524, or 20%. But the match is made through volunteers, civilian volunteers. And we generally have 15 to 30 individual volunteers throughout the year. And what we were told earlier today is that by March of any given year, we've already made our match. And so, this is definitely something that is, is worth its value. The purpose of the grant is to provide local services to victims of intimate partner violence. Now, they talked about, it used to be called domestic violence, but, you know, seeing that sometimes it's not someone that you actually live with, they kind of carved it out and, and morphed it into intimate partner violence. The grant funds three staff, their training and their travel. And it provides listening to the victims, assesses a victim's risk of further injury, injury or homicide. It provides education on power and control behavior of assaults, personal saving, personal safety, planning, and helps to arrange safe shelter and provide advocacy with legal and civil court proceedings, and assists with victims' rights compensation. That's kind of why I wanted you, and I, and I don't know if there's an opportunity to, to coordinate. But the CARE Program is a post-arrest response team responding to victims of intimate partner violence in Lansing, East Lansing, and Meridian Townships and Michigan State University. And again, it utilizes three staff and approximately 42 volunteers on call seven days a week via the Tri-County Dispatch Center. It provides available free 911 phones and arranges transportation at local community agencies, and accesses other community resources available to the victims, and dispenses emergency person, personal need items. And with that, I will move the resolution accepting the grant.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to resolutions, I'm sorry, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have the following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing that the Code of Ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of a property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code for Property located at Z-7, 2019, 1310 Knollwood Avenue, from F. Commercial District to B. Residential District, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title and is referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
The applicant in this case is Craig Gerard of the Gallagher Law Firm. And the reason for the request is to bring the residential use of this property into compliance with zoning code. There were a number of, the issues discussed in development and planning today. One of those is that being a non-conforming use or, or property, it actually restricts the amount of money they can actually invest into this property for repairs and rehabilitation and things of that nature. I think it's actually restricted to about 35% of the building's value. With that being said, the surrounding land use and zoning, to the north, you have single-family residential, it's Zone B. Residential. To the south is a convenience store, it's Zone F. Commercial. To the east, it's, single-family residential is the current land use and it's zoned F. Commercial. And to the west, you have single-family residential and it's zoned F. Commercial. So, there's quite a bit of non-conforming uses in the area. In terms of the master plan, it does designate the subject property as residential corridor. And so, actually, F. Commercial will allow for a number of uses that run into direct conflict to the land use patterns advanced in the master plan. And on the strength of that, the zoning administrators are recommending approval. The planning board did meet on October 1st, and they are recommending approval as well. That was a unanimous vote. And so, the public hearing is set forth and the resolution would be set for November 18th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of setting the public hearing, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage by the Committee on Development and Planning. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code of Ordinances. Z-5, 2019, 521 West Hillsdale Street, rezoning from DM4 Residential District to D1 Professional Office District, is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Hussein.
So, it feels like forever ago that we had the public hearing on this. The applicant is Mr. Sean Watson. He was with us in development and planning right through. He was here, obviously, when we introduced and set the public hearing. He was here for the public hearing, so we really appreciate him being with us throughout that process. He had actually considered selling or renting this property at one point. He was, if I recall correctly, he was He was, if I recall correctly, he was approached by his personal attorney about potentially using this property for a one-attorney law office. The surrounding land use and zoning to the north is single and two-family residential. It's DM4 residential. To the south is two-family residential, Zone DM4 residential. To the east, you have a vacant property, as well as to the west, you have a vacant property. And to the east and west, both of those parcels of land are Zone D1 residential. The master plan designates us for downtown mixed-use center edge. In terms of our zoning administrator, they are recommending approval. The planning board also recommended approval unanimously. If I recall correctly, at the public hearing, there was no commentary that was in opposition to. So with that being said, I would move Z5, 2019, for 521 West Hillsdale Street.
Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, roll call.
On passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Garza, Councilmember Hussein, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. And we are to the order of speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you wish to address the city council, please jump up right now and sign that sheet. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by you.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We have a letter from the city clerk regarding amendments of boards, commissions, and authorities.
Please don't file.
The city council meeting schedule for 2020.
Committee of hold.
Reappointment of Tim Barron as a media representative to the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Public safety.
Human rights ordinance rules and guidelines for processing, investigating, mediating, conciliating, and recommending resolution of complaints.
Committee of hold.
Letters from the mayor regarding Act 15, 2019, Parks and Rec, Recreation Department proposal to acquire a parcel east of Edmore Park.
Public service committee.
The appointment of DeShawn Leek as the third ward member of the Board of Water and Light.
Committee of hold.
Reappointments of several individuals to various boards.
Committee of hold.
Appointment of Martha Serna, second ward member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Development and planning.
Communications and petitions, claim appeal for claim number 1720 for Ruben Montes for $518 in trash.
General services.
Claim number 1723, Reed Machinery, Inc., for $1,061 in trash violations.
General services.
And claim number 1737, Colin Smith, for $3,864 in trash violations.
General services.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Are there any councilmember remarks? Councilmember.
We are to motion of excuse.
Oh, excuse me, excused absent. Vice President Spatafor.
I move to excuse Councilmember Garza from the city meeting.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Now councilmember comments. Okay, Councilmember Spitzley, was that?
No, no, no.
You were just excusing. Everybody was excusing. Okay.
Then remarks by the mayor.
Mayor, do you have any other comments? Did you get the date of the, okay.
I did, and thank you to Sheri. Sheri's still here. Sheri's not here, she's probably in the council office. Thank you to Sheri. Yeah, the Veterans Day tribute is November 11th at the Cooley Law School Building on 300 South Capitol. At 8:30 a.m., we'll have a breakfast, and then at 10 a.m., the program begins. It will be emceed by the wonderful Sheri Jones, and I'll be there. Brigadier General Mike McDaniel, Associate Dean of Cooley Law School, and also Michigan National Guard, and then we'll have the Glen Aaron Pipe Band there. It's always a great event, and I hope folks from the city will join us, and I appreciate you reminding me about that. It was on November 11th, so I just didn't catch it for next week, but it'll be before the next city council.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay.
All right, we are to public comment. We have Aleah Irwin, and then Cynthia Ward. Aleah? Okay, Cynthia Ward, and then Willie Williams.
Thank you. Council, I wanted to share with you that there is a new Ingham County Legal Self-Help Center that is now located at the Library of Michigan, the State Law Library, which is located at 702 West Calamazoo Street in Lansing, Michigan. The Legal Self-Help Center is a drop-in resource center for persons who practically are self-represented, people who cannot afford to hire attorneys to guide them through the court process or bring a claim on their behalf. So the Legal Self-Help Center is there. They will not provide legal advice, but they will provide information and referral, and they will provide court forms for free, and they'll also direct people to specific websites that can help them navigate through their claims. So the Self-Help Center just opened last week, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Willie Williams, and then Mary Reynolds.
Good evening, everybody. Willie Williams, downtown Lansing. I missed the events part earlier in the meeting, darn. We have an event coming up next week on Tuesday. It's voting day. If you haven't already voted, people, then you're at fault if we get the wrong people in this time. Vote absentee, vote 24 hours a day. The city clerk is doing everything in the world to help you vote. If you don't vote this time, don't blame me. Bets is best. And the only one I approve of so far is Jackson Long for at-large. Vote for them, but people, more importantly, vote. We can go in the voting booth, and we can vote for who we want. We don't have to vote for the bully that is telling us all kinds of stupid stuff to get us to vote, for them, because it's not Republican-Democrat anymore, it's now bullies and not bullies. That's who's running, and everybody on the list that's eligible today is either a bully or a nice person. That's what we have for Republicans and Democrats now, bullies and nice people. I'll speak of two things for Ward 1. I'll speak of Councilmember Washington. Her first, her first time coming here years ago, lied to me and pulled what I now call a Trump. Doesn't even listen to public comment anymore, she's left the room. She lied to me, said all kinds of nasty stuff about Carol Wood, and then the next year voted every single time, every single time, the way Carol Wood voted, and she's been a Republican ever since. Roddicker had $123 left in her account that she's using for campaign funds. Wood had $142 left in her account from last time. Spitzley had $250 left in her account from last time, but Washington had $2,500 left from last time. What, she puts it in a bank, gets interest? What, how does that work? Goes back to the donators? What do we do with that sort of thing? She's making money on money. She said she would quit her full-time job, and she never did. Trump lies. I just don't, I just don't do it.
Thank you. And finally, we have Mary Reynolds.
She's trying to get here.
Oh, you're done, Mary, go back.
Time is up.
Well, gang, you did pretty good tonight. Haven't been here to harass you. Put it back to zero zero. Haven't been here to harass you because I had to stay home for a couple of meetings. I don't think you're aware of it, but you really are more on the ball than you have been in the other ones I've been hearing. You actually had some situations that had to be addressed, and you addressed it in a manner of everybody didn't cave. You wanted answers to problems that we wanted, and then you asked the questions, and that's good. That's really very good. I'm very proud of all of you tonight, because you all did really good. And I have to go because I have to catch my cat. So you all have a safe week.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.
Just a little louder for Samantha, because she's just got a little bit of hearing left.